It is six o'clock and the Kerrville City Council is now in session. The invocation and pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Brenda Hughes. Would you please stand?
Heavenly Father, tonight we give you thanks for the bounty of grace and blessings that come from your hand. We express gratitude for life and health and our well-being. We thank you for the meaningful work we will do and the opportunities we have to serve our community. We give all praise to you for the gift of this beautiful city and for the staff and volunteers who strive to help us do your work. Bless our time with family and friends and call us to a life consistent with gratitude and in response to your grace. Open our hearts to recognize your presence among us and open our minds to respond to your will. I ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to make sure to welcome a couple of people who are with us tonight on city staff. These are our two assistant city managers, recently named, Kim Meismer, who has been on the staff for a number of years, Michael Hornis, comes to us from Live Oak and after that, from Palestine. At this time, if anyone present wants to speak on an agenda, they need to sign up and present a speaker request form to the city secretary here in advance of the item being read into the record. When speakers are called, they are to come to the microphone and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have been concluded. Let me also note that on the council, when we use outside sources, whether you're reading from a document or referring to a document, make sure it is factually correct. Also, remember in terms of our procedures, call, if a council member's going to speak, if you will nod to me, I'll give you a thumbs up or head nod or something. If you're into a series of questions with citizens, then, you know, that's fine, unless it becomes repetitive or fruitless. Now, items of community interest, Mr. Kenyus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just have one tonight, and we have a very fun activity coming up, maybe. It's going to be Friday night. We have a park and watch drive-in. It is scheduled to start at 6:30. I think it's $5 per vehicle. If you order online, $10 at the gate. Did this a couple of times last year. It's out at Kerrville Shriner Park. It was a lot of fun. It was also a little bit warmer than it may be Friday night. So I would encourage everybody to keep up with our Facebook page and our website because we will be updating either tomorrow or Thursday, depending on...
Wednesday.
Okay, tomorrow. As to whether or not that's going to proceed, based on what kind of weather we're going to have. We're hoping for good weather. We'll see.
All right. Counsel, do you have items? Okay, if no, we'll move forward. We have a couple of presentations to make, and I'm going to ask some folks that are here representing the Rotary Club to please meet me up here at the place. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Y'all have been doing good work.
Thank you.
Let me ask you, are y'all related to each other?
My mom.
Your mom. All right, okay. Stephanie Schremer. Phyllis Ricks and the Rotary Club of Kerrville with the February 22, 2022 Kerrville Kindness Award is presented to them. For six years, the Rotary Club of Kerrville's Stephanie Schremer and Phyllis Ricks and a team of Rotary volunteers have been coordinating traditional holiday meals for the Blue Santa Program, serving citizens in need. Two years ago, they expanded their efforts to include the Doyle community as well. In December of 2021, the Rotary Club served holiday meals to 73 families while providing toys for 181 children. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to Stephanie, Phyllis, and the Rotary Club of Kerrville for their commitment and dedication to serving the Kerrville community. Signed by the city council. And congratulations, and this, any comments or observations you have for us?
No.
No?
Not really.
She'll be happy to take it back to our club, and she really does all the work. I just kind of...
Kind of help. Great, great. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one more. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a former president of the Rotary Club taking pictures tonight. All right. Representative from the American Red Cross. Betty, if you'll come up here and stand by me. City of Kerrville proclamation, whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank volunteers, our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help their neighbors when they're in need. And whereas, the American Red Cross heroes are on the front lines every day, even during a pandemic or natural disaster. They volunteer their time, enhance skills, give blood, or provide financial donations to help those in need. Ninety percent of the American Red Cross workers or workforce are volunteers. The Hill Country Chapter was chartered in 1917, and we would like to remember our local heroes who helped people in need. And whereas, during February 2021, Texas was hit with a devastating and deadly winter blast, with the Hill Country being hit the hardest. The storm introduced a host of challenges. In addition to the widespread electrical outages, disaster responders were faced with impassable road systems, frozen water, and fuel shortages. The American Red Cross supported the lifesaving Warming Center set up by government agencies and community partners with supplies and logistical assistance such as cots, blankets, comfort kits, meals, pallets of water, and cleanup kits. And whereas, we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. And now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, mayor of the city of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Kerrville to be affixed this 22nd day of February 2022. Congratulations. Do you have a word for us?
I'd just like to thank all of the wonderful people in Kerrville because without the work that you all do to support us and without the money that you give, we could not do what we do. So thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone signed up tonight?
Yes, sir.
We have three speakers. Michael Sigerman.
I am Michael Sigerman. I live at 4,000 Comanche Trace Drive, and I have just a couple of comments. I hesitate to make these comments, but I've been watching these city council meetings now for a pretty good while, and I've watched many residents come up and speak, addressing you guys in city council, telling you that you're liars, you're not telling the truth, you're misrepresenting, all the things that you guys are not doing. And I haven't seen any proof that any of that's true, and I'm really just kind of tired of listening to all this, but I do bring up something because I think this needs to be addressed. We've been addressing the date of our city election for almost a year and a half, or maybe just a year, but there's been constant bickering, constant claiming that the city is violating the city charter, that we can't have the election in November, that, I mean, we can't have the election in May, it has to be in November. There's been insinuations by one city council member that he has an email from a citizen that has a letter from the Secretary of State that claims that we absolutely cannot hold our election in May, it has to be in November. Thankfully, through the Freedom of Information Act, Hill Country Community Journal was able to get a copy of that email. The story was written in the Hill Country Community Journal, and the city of Kerrville placed on their website an explanation of everything that the Secretary of State said, and I did not see anywhere in that report nor in that statement where there was a letter from the Secretary of State as reported by one city council member that we were not allowed to have our election in May, it had to be in November. So I think that's a misrepresentation. It's not truthful, it's deceitful, and maybe sometime in the future, we can get a copy of the letter that has been intimated, that exists, that we can't have our election in May, it has to be in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Harrison.
John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow. Is this on?
Yeah.
Are you getting tired of hearing from me?
No.
Hey, folks, I got two things to talk about tonight, and both of them, they're all the same topic. I just want to let you know that the Kerrville Citizens for Safety and Security Political Action Committee is active, we're working. You haven't seen very much of us, but we've been meeting quite a bit. We created this political action committee to support the bond election that's on the May 7th ballot. As most of all of us know, Proposition A on that ballot, when passed, will provide you all the authority to sell bonds, to build a new public safety facility that will house our police department, our fire admin, our municipal court, our IT, and also give us an emergency operations center. You're going to start seeing, hopefully, a whole lot more of us after the March 1st primaries is over. Second, I wanted to publicly share a quick analysis that I did of the estimated impact of the bond passing to the tax rate for the property in Kerrville city limits. I know Julie did one for you all last week or two weeks ago. I wanted to look at it, just see what the impact is on my total bill. You know, we both write two checks, we all write two checks, one to the ISD and one to Bob Reeves for five different taxing authorities. Right now, I went to KCAD, Kerr County appraisal district website, and you can see all this information, it's all there very easily. In Kerrville today, we pay $2.0417, 20417, per $100 valuation for our taxes. That's the checks we write, that's the total impact. After this bond is passed and the taxes are raised for the city, it's estimated, and it's only an estimate, it can change, it's estimated to go up to $2.21095. That's a 3.3% increase in total tax impact to a property owner in the city of Kerrville. So that's not insignificant, I recognize that, but I think it's a great investment, it's well worth the investment that we get, we have the facilities we need for our public safety facilities. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen Summerlin.
Mary Ellen Summerlin, 105 Turnberry Circle. I'm here tonight because on the agenda, Roman Garcia has requested executive session item on personnel matters concerning the city attorney, and it sets up for me an instance of deja vu all over again. When I was on the city council, Bonnie and Robert White were trying to get rid of the city attorney, and they'd already been at it for a long time. When Bonnie was mayor, her attacks on the city manager were often hostile and always Her motives and reasons were not always crystal clear to me, but it looked like very often the problem was attacking the messenger because she didn't like the message. The interpretation of the law didn't fit the agenda she had in mind, and so she was mad at the attorney. After Bonnie's departure, it seemed to me George Berudi took up the mantle, and now I hate to think that Roman is going to be the spokesperson for that same old thing.
I'm going to have to declare you out of order.
Oh, okay.
Because it is, it is an agenda item.
Oh, so I have to wait and say this at agenda time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's the end of the citizen speakers.
All right, we now come to the consent agenda. These items will be considered together unless council member or citizen pulls one. All right, do I hear a motion in regard to the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Who seconded?
All in favor?
Well, it doesn't matter.
I'll let the mayor determine, it's fine.
What?
She was wondering who seconded it, we kind of said the same.
Oh, all right.
Councilor Hughes, I'll give it to her.
All right, all in favor?
Thanks.
It passes, okay. Would you read in?
Voted yes.
Number 5A.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2022-11, an ordinance altering the prima facie speed limit on state highway 173 from approximately 1,585 feet southeast of its intersection with state loop 534 and continuing to the city limits. Located southeast of the Comanche Trace Drive, such distance equal to 1.274 miles. Reducing said speed limit to 50 miles per hour, authorizing installation of appropriate signs and markings, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of $200, and ordering publication. We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Okay, Cal, tell us about it.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the way this process works, just to give you a quick synopsis before we get into the more specifics of this, whenever a speed reduction on a state highway is involved, the city can request it, and then TechDOT does the analysis. So the study is evaluated, and a recommendation is brought back to the city, and then we bring it to you for direction on enforcement. And, you know, that's what we're here tonight, is for that last step before we go to the actual initiation enforcement. So on this specific, if I can get the PowerPoint brought up, so what we did is there's about a five-mile study area, and essentially from 534 to Heap Lane, most people don't know where Heap Lane is, and that's near River Road. So we're looking at, like I said, a little over five miles of 173 corridor. It's currently 45 at Loop 534, transitions to 55, and then near River Road goes out to 70, and so on into Vanderia. So the affected area, based on the findings from TechDOT, was within the city limits about a little over mile and quarter, that is currently 55. Their recommendation is to reduce that down to 50. So basically, what that corridor would look like, starting at 534, I don't know how well this shows on your screen, we stay consistent with the 45, and then where that current transition is, the 55, that would actually be 50. So the 50 mile an hour zone, the affected area, would be from the current KSP, approximate the entrance to KSP, all the way out to the city limits. From the city limits to the 70 mile an hour zone would stay as the 55, and then 70 miles after that. So tonight's action is to bring this before you because pursuant to transportation code and everything we do require council action to go initiate this.
All right. You have questions, council?
Do we have a representative from TechDOT here?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm the one who initiated this on behalf of a citizen, and because there's, I think at last count, 36 driveways coming directly onto that highway, I would still like to see it at 45. Can you please explain why we cannot get it down to 45?
Yes, so when they do the study analysis, if you look at Exhibit B, it has what's called a strip map. The strip map essentially designates an 85th percentile, and that's where the speed, you know, and so if you look at the legend on this strip map, it'll show you 42, that's just an arbitrary number, just in the legend. But what that does, it takes into account the speed zone that TechDOT has, and they identify this based on the current speeds that are evaluated. You know, they do take into account some accidents. There's not really a large amount of accidents that, for this large of an area, you know, what they really were able to focus on was the current speed of the vehicular traffic. And their recommendation was not to go to 45 at this point, based on the traffic volumes and speed that they currently have.
We pushed TechDOT hard to lower it as much as they could possibly do within the bounds of what that traffic engineering study was, and quite frankly, they really didn't even want to move it to 50. But again, we pushed really hard to get to at least 50 within that city limit zone.
What, mayor, I'm here. What happens if the council wants to adopt this ordinance with a lower speed limit?
So we would not be able to adopt this ordinance without going back to TechDOT? And essentially, as Mr. Hoppe said, that's what we've been pushing, and 50 was what they, what they were agreeable to. But if that is the direction, we could go back, and they may say the same thing, they may conduct another study, it's hard to really tell.
At this point, they weren't agreeable to go beyond 50.
Okay.
And because it is a state highway, we had to have their agreement.
Sure. Well, a point of observation, looking at their speed study, if the 85th percentile represents the speed that a majority travels at, and if you look at the speed study, it's, the 85th percentile is 55 miles per hour and 65 miles per hour, within the 45 mile per hour speed limit zone going towards Comanche Trace. And I think we can all agree that that's already very, that's way too fast, it's 15 miles per hour over the posted speed limit. And if you look at the rest of the study, this area has higher, has a lot of curves, it has a higher crash rate than the statewide average. There, those are three identified curves, and no middle turn lane or left turn lane, and it's within a rural residential area. So I understand, you know, TechDOT was the one that gave that final recommendation, or they were, that's what they were able to agree to. But for the safety for the citizens, I think it needs to be lower than that. So if there's something we can do, whether we have to postpone this, table it, deny it, go back to TechDOT, whatever, that's what I would look at trying to do.
Let me be clear, too. Pursuant to state law, they have to do another speed study. And so unless the speed study would be appreciably different than what they have now, you know, their hands are tied.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's no discretion. They have to do this based on the study and all the evidence that goes into that.
So it's almost like, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can either adopt this tonight or not, and TechDOT will have to go back to another speed study, which probably won't get any different results.
Right.
If they do it soon especially, and we're left with this or nothing, really, right?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
You know, I think it ought to be 45, given the whole lot of different reasons. I understand we partner with TechDOT on everything. If you look at the number of TechDOT roads in the city, the city only has three traffic lights, all the rest are TechDots. But I'm a bit of a dilemma because if we turn this down, they come back, here's the study, we say 50, not much we can do, right?
Correct. They're bound by the limits of the transportation code of what they can and can't do.
Wait, mayor, can I clarify what you just said?
Yes.
When the mayor said there's nothing you can do, were you thinking, like, we're now bound to the 50 mile per hour limit, or like, it's that or?
Well, if, if they have to go by their traffic study, and that traffic study says it's 50 miles an hour, 50, yeah, miles per hour, we can turn this down, we can call for 45 speed limit, but probably not going to happen if they place it on the same study they've already done.
We don't have the capability to unilaterally
Yeah.
determine the speed limit at 45.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to have TechDOT's agreement to be able to move to whatever that legal speed limit is.
And again, I understand, we partner with them all the time, I know that, but counsel, any other comments, questions?
What about, can we request that they put left turn lanes in on that stretch of highway that they don't have right now?
Yeah, we have made a request to examine the potential for additional turn lanes in locations. They do periodic studies of that, and we have added this to their study list.
Okay.
And so they're a big region, right, across all of their 12 counties, San Antonio region, but we have added this to that study area
Okay.
for additional turn lanes.
So under those circumstances, would we, what position are we better in? Do we accept this and let them look at that, or do we say no and wait till they do that?
I think that we're able to lower the speed limit in the near term, and I think that the hope is that in the future, we could get additional improvements that are made, particularly as additional development occurs along that corridor, and at that time, we can ask them to go and do additional speed studies and see ultimately how the results are. There's an enforcement mechanism to this as well, and so I think as we look at more additional strategic enforcement of this area, that will also help in addition to the lower speed limit.
Hey, let me just make a comment, yeah, and then I'll go back to Mr. Garcia. Judge Henneke is here tonight, and I was going out to his house in this area, and to try to make sure you're turning into the right place when there's no turn lane, and folks are going as fast as they go, it, that's a problem. And, Mr. Garcia?
Is, do you want to?
No, I was looking for the judge, I just...
Okay, all right.
Let's say we go with a 50 mile per hour speed limit. When is the soonest that they can do another speed study?
Well, we would have a publication period and then effective period of when this one would go into effect. And then you probably want to give traffic a little time to, and really, it's kind of arbitrary, you know, three months, six months, and then we're looking at school being out. You know, it's really kind of, you know, getting a lay of the land of how traffic is reacting to the speed change. Are they reacting at all?
Right.
You know, is PD having to write more tickets because people just aren't paying attention to the 50 versus the 55?
Because I was thinking, council and staff, if we were to go with the 50 mile per hour speed limit, we may have a positive reaction out of the drivers, which may lower the 85th percentile speed, and if they were to conduct another study after we try to go out and reach out to them again to do it, that percentile may be decreased at that point, and we may, at that point, be in a stage to say, can we do 45? You know?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right. Do we have speakers to this?
Yes, sir. James Kraft.
James Kraft, 2783 Bandera Highway. I do have one additional piece of information for y'all. I went out
Thank you.
this morning and actually took photographs of the areas along this stretch of highway.
We continue?
No, I know I didn't discount. Let's see if I didn't. There we go. I just didn't get it out of my eye.
Thank you.
I did take some pictures of this area. There's basically two, two areas in this section of highway from the Kerrville Shriner Park where 55 mile an hour starts until Comanche Trace where the next 55 mile an hour speed limit is. And you can see on those pictures, you know, I've marked them with 1, 2, and 3. The one that you see with number 1 is actually looking out of, when I'm sitting at the end of my driveway and looking down north, which will be coming into town. This is a low visibility area. You have about, I think I estimated at 3 seconds at 55 miles an hour before. If you turn out going south on that highway, yeah... If you turn out going south on that highway, you have three seconds before that car becomes visible and is on you, a very short period of time. These are factors that I don't believe TechStot has actually taken into consideration of that. The second one is actually down the road, gets you an idea. It's just the next driveway down from me, coming out of the condominiums, the Cypress Landing condominiums, looking south on the highway, and where you see the red dot is where the Wheaties entrance is. And the volume of traffic that comes in and out of that entrance and exiting it is very high, including concrete trucks that are going in dumping their residue concrete, semi-trailer trucks that are hauling debris into there, and a lot of pickup trucks hauling trailers that are hauling brush from landscapers, tree service people, things like this, that are dumping it back into that gravel pit. So when you look at that and you look there, you don't have a lot of time when you see traffic coming from the south and towards upon you as well, and there's just a whole lot of traffic coming into that entrance. The third one is actually down the, basically the first driveway south of the Curval-Shriner Park. This is at twenty-five sixty-five Bandera Highway. It's Mr. Stern's driveway. When you take a look at that, you actually, you can see you have a hill that kind of obscures some of the traffic that's coming at you. So there's a lot of factors in there that I think TechStot really hasn't considered. And I'll try not to go over time here, but I think it's pretty important on these things. There was a mention about a speed study, and if it wasn't approved tonight, when a speed study might be done again. I went to TechStot individually about three years ago, requesting that they change the speed limit to forty-five on this section of highway, worked with Mr. Coward at the time out there. They did a speed study then and came back with eighty-fifth percentile showing fifty-five. That was about two years ago, maybe three years ago, they did that study. So in answer to Mr. Garcia's question, the possibility of another speed study being done, would, it's probable and fairly likely, if the city goes back and rejects this ordinance and then asks another speed study be done, they would, would do that. Now, if you approve the ordinance at fifty, which I'm not gonna like, but I'll settle with it, the probability of them coming back and doing a speed study later, if you ask them a couple of years, I think is pretty high. So that's a possibility. Like I said, I like the forty-five, and if y'all give me just a couple more minutes, I'm not trying to take up a lot of your time, but.
Be quick.
Go ahead.
No, be quick.
All right, I will. I'll try to. I don't talk fast, but I'll try to be quick. I think one of the biggest items here is contributing factors underneath the conditions that TechStot themselves set out on their speed study guidelines. And you'll see that this section of highway meets four of the seven easily. And I'm not sure that TechStot actually considered those. Might be worth, if the ordinance was rejected this evening, go back and discuss with TechStot, and I'll be happy to sit in with the city people doing that, discuss with TechStot, and then see if we can't come up with a conclusion on that.
Ms. Clarkson has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you've been very involved in this, so I guess my question would be, what, if you were, if you were sitting up here, what would be the better choice? Leave it at fifty-five for now and hope that they'll do something, or reduce it to fifty and then hope that they'll do something? Either way, we're hoping for something in the future. So, really, I mean, I'm just, I, you know, I want to know, because you've been so involved and done so much research, you know, how you view this?
Sure. So for expediency, if I were sitting in your position, I probably would go ahead and reject the ordinance, but go directly back to TechStot and ask them to review the information based on the criteria that I've given y'all, particularly in their speed study guidelines that they have, and other factors that are involved, and see if that makes a difference to them. Like I said, I'm not sure that they considered this. And the reason why I say that is, I've actually talked to Dale Picha. He's an area engineer in San Antonio, and I had a discussion with him, and he asked me to send the speed study because he couldn't pull it up at the time, which I did, gratefully provided by City Attorney Mr. Hayes, who had received that. He got back to me via phone the next morning, said that he'd review the speed study, and it did show that the eighty-fifth percentile was fifty, and they would probably stay with that. I did send him an email and outlined some of the conditions that I thought were pertinent to this, and why they should go ahead and consider it. He gave back and basically said, and not verbatim, but just paraphrased here, that they were gonna go ahead and stay with the eighty-fifth percentile. So that's why it makes me think that they're really not considering those conditions. And I think it's worth that time. Secondarily, if you weren't going to approve it, then, or you were going to approve it, then I would go ahead and approve it and put on my docket for the city into the future, maybe a year from now, and go back to them, ask them for a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. One of the other factors that just came up this morning, that I think most of y'all probably read in the Carnival Daily Times, was there is a two-hundred-and-fifty home subdivisions that going out south of me on that highway. That traffic is gonna increase exponentially, not only with, and I'm just saying that, and it's not a fact, but I'm telling you, it's going to, not only with, you know, vehicles of residences, residents and people like this, but the truck traffic on construction is gonna jump way high.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Thank you.
Okay.
Fred Henneke?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Fred Henneke. I live at twenty-five ninety-five Bandera Highway. I've actually lived there for seventeen years this month, and I have the distinction of being one of the thirty-six driveways that Councilwoman Hughes mentioned that lead directly onto the end of the highway. I will also say that I have the dubious distinction of being one of those accidents. I've been rear-ended at fifty-five mile an hour while I was trying to turn into my driveway. Should the council go ahead and approve the, or adopt this ordinance and the speed limit be limited to fifty, then perhaps it wouldn't hurt so much when I get rear-ended trying to turn into a house. The traffic on that stretch of the highway has increased exponentially, I would say, in the last five or six years. It's several times what it was seventeen years ago, or even ten years ago. It's not gonna get any better. As Mr. Kraft, who I want to applaud him for all the work he's done on this, he really has carried the ball for all of us who live along there. As he noted, there's a major subdivision going in not too far further up the road, which is gonna dramatically impact the traffic. And I'm pleased that he mentioned not just the automobile traffic, but the truck traffic, which is already significant. You get a lot of traffic going in and out of Wheatcraft once they start construction. You'll have that kind of traffic. And you also have just trucks trying to barrel from Curval to Bandera and back the other way. It's busy. My druthers, if I had my druthers, it would be thirty-five. I don't think I'm gonna get my druthers. Forty-five would be nice, but as I said earlier, fifty at least is an improvement. It's an improvement that gives you another microsecond to make your decision and either go out on the highway or turn into your driveway. I think the notion of more turn lanes is just, just almost an absolute. Coming down that way, I mean, the way that people are rolling and you have to turn into a tight driveway, I mean, my house was built, I believe, in the nineteen-sixties, and that driveway is sharp, and it's not intended to be able to go into easily in the face of heavy traffic coming your way. If you ask me, I would say I'll take the fifty. Let's see what we can do about turn lanes, and let's go back to them perhaps after that subdivision is completed and see what we can get, because fifty-five is clearly too much, fifty is too much, forty-five would be better, and I'd be real happy with thirty-five. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do you have any other speakers?
No, sorry, that's the end of the speakers.
Okay. Counsel, what is the recommendation on this one?
There's a part of me that says we should take what we can get right now and work towards the turn lanes. That's gonna be one of the biggest improvements out there. And we don't know how long we'd have to wait if we turn it down. We have no idea. I mean, they may say, hey, we've done a study, and it'll be a couple more years before we'll do another one. So I'm tempted to say, let's take what we've got and keep pushing for turn lanes.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I agree with you. You want to make a motion of that effect?
Okay, I.
Yeah, hold on, just a second.
May I say one more thing?
Okay.
Just real quick.
Quickly, James.
I'll walk slow, but I'll try to talk quick.
Okay.
So in response to the left turn lane, and I've had a discussion with several of the residences along that area, and as well as Troy Witt, who was a maintenance person out at TechStot. And when I was out there, they were having to do some maintenance of the driveway because of a school bus accident, believe it or not. I mentioned something about a left turn lane, and he says, well, would you rather have a left turn lane and take off the shoulders, because we're not gonna expand the highway, so we're gonna have to narrow the shoulders, or would you rather not have a left turn lane, leave those shoulders for acceleration lane? And I thought, I think I'll take those shoulders, because getting out onto that highway, if you take those shoulders away, I'm thinking you're probably gonna have more accidents, because I do, other people use that for acceleration lanes as well. Thanks.
Hey, I was ready to turn this one down, but I think we are better off to adopt it and hope that we can get some of these other issues addressed.
Yeah, either lights or further reduction a little later down the line, but every, every mile per hour that it is reduced, can't do anything but help.
Yeah. Anything, all right. We got a motion, do we have a second?
I will move that we adopt ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-eleven.
And I'll second.
Second, all in favor, let me know by the raised hands. Thank you. Now, could we have a staff member raise the temp just a little bit? We get blasted by that air conditioner here. Okay. Okay, five B, Ms. McElhaney?
Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twelve. An ordinance amending Chapter one oh-two Traffic and Vehicles, Article Four, Operation of Vehicles, Division One, Generally, by adding a new section to this division to prohibit the use of an engine brake or similar devices, providing a penalty for each offense, providing the effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Right.
This is a little out of the norm for me. I mean, two ordinances. I'm not sure I'm in the right place here. So in the comp plan, we didn't have a specific item for this. But as you'll see in the agenda bill, you know, one of the things that we did have in the comp plan was the interest of, you know, the peace, quiet health, and safety of our citizens. You know, with that, you know, we've received several complaints about the noises, largely due to semi-trucks in our steep terrain. After doing some quick research this past week, we've got a number of cities in the hill country that have this. Burnie Junction even has one. Burnett, Marble Falls, you know, really the comparable cities. Bernie is a little bit flattered, but Fredericksburg has a more restrictive noise ordinance that prohibits engine braking. So we wanted to bring this before you again, so that we could, you know, assist our citizens in preserving that quality of life and, you know, have the initiation of engine brakes prohibited within the city limits. So what you see on your screen is where the signs would be placed. If you look on Highway sixteen, for example, there's a lot of terrain coming in. We've got a lot of, you know, spots where the city limits come in and out. So what we're proposing on that one is actually very, I think there's four spots, Rio Robles, for example, that hill, you know, gets a lot of traffic from one seventy-three, from sixteen, you know, just everywhere. But we would also, you know, put it in other spots along sixteen, not just there, not once they're in our city. That's just to assist those coming off, laymen and others. And, you know, that's just one example of the many locations that we would do this, as well as I-ten and the major highways coming in. That's really all I have, is just to get this in front of you tonight to take action.
Counsel, discussion, questions?
The, the fine, if someone is stopped and given a ticket, the fine runs about five hundred? Is that five hundred dollars?
Not to exceed.
Oh, not to exceed?
Right, right.
Okay, so it's not just a flat five hundred?
Right.
So how do you determine whether it's?
One hundred or five?
One hundred or four hundred or what? How do they determine?
We, you know, we rely on the prosecutor, for instance, and the judge to set those fines, and we'll probably set something for, you know, a first-time offense and then escalate it up.
I mean, I think it's a good thing. It's just, it's one of those things that if that noise happens, by the time it's reported and someone determines who that is, I mean, they're gonna be long gone. And, but, I mean, I think we need to do it. I don't have any problem with doing it, it's just sometimes I wonder about the fine, so.
Apparently, apparently in other cities that you've looked at, there's pretty good compliance from the drivers when they see those signs.
Yes, the signs do, probably ninety percent of the enforcement.
Right next to Rio Robles. They're gonna know. Scorchen?
Is there any concern to motor vehicle traffic? Is there any reason that these trucks need to deploy this braking mechanism to avoid a collision or to, you know?
Most of it is your, like I said, your semi-trucks that have the heavier loads, and instead of putting that on their brake system, you have to think about the wearing brake pads. If you're constantly coming down some of these hills on one-ten, as opposed to letting your engine reduce your speed, or even just to maintain, instead of, you know, stepping on the brakes, it's easier.
Obviously, being licensed, understand that.
So basically, they just need to slow down in order to stop this, right?
Right, just step on the brakes instead of letting the engine do it.
Engine do it, okay, okay.
All right, do we have a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twelve as presented.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second here. I need to favor this side for motions and seconds, because these two get most of them, so.
Top of it.
Yeah. Okay. Six A?
We need to, we need to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, why don't we vote? There you go. All in favor, passes unanimously. Okay, six A?
Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-ten, second reading. An ordinance annexing an approximate sixty-two-point-oh-six-two and twenty-point-eight acre tracts of land, both located within the Comanche Trace Residential Development into the city of Curval, Texas, and extending the boundary limits of the city so as to include such property within the city limits. Providing a service agreement for the annexed property and adopting the zoning for the annexed property is a medium-density residential district, R-two, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, this is second reading. We looked at this last time. Is there a motion on this matter?
I'll move that we approve ordinance number twenty-two-ten on second reading.
Mr. Garcia, would you second that? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, all in favor of this, if you'd like me to know by the raised hands? Okay.
I would just like to say, you know, Comanche Trace is one of those build it and they will come, and this has just continued to build. It's been exciting to see all of that.
But going back to our previous item, if you drive, Comanche Trace drive all the way back, it is unbelievable, the number of homes in there, the traffic you've got.
And the traffic, yes.
Under some lights.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-two-two, which is second reading?
Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-nine, second reading. An ordinance restating and reaffirming the creation of the Recovery Community Coalition of the City of Curval, Texas, and providing for its purpose membership roles and responsibilities. The provision of said board will be placed within Chapter Two, Article Four of the City's Code of Ordinances, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, second reading. We dealt with this last time. What's your, is there a motion?
Within the motion, you do explicitly list the members of that committee going forward, which are the seven active members.
I recommend, did you?
I just had a question. Was the member who is being considered for removal, were they notified? I just had a question. Was the member who is being considered for removal, were they notified?
They are notified of their attendance record.
Okay, okay.
I'm not clear what names you want listed.
Right here, 1 through 7.
Okay, okay, got you. All right, there we go.
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 2022-09 on second reading and reconstitute the board with the appointments of the following persons. Randy Benno, and do I need to state their representation?
Just the names would be fine.
Joseph Dupree, Leanne Fitzpatrick, Thomas Hurt, Sabine Gensel, Joe, Joseph Pizer, Pizer, and Cynthia Tate.
Do you have a second? All in favor of that, if you'd let me know by the raised hands, and it passes unanimously. 8C, Ms. McElhanlon, please.
Ordinance number 2022-08, second reading. An ordinance amending the city's fiscal year 2022 budget to account for the receipt of additional revenue, the dispersment of such revenue, and to make other amendments as provided, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Again, we dealt with this last time. No changes. Okay. We have a motion.
I have a comment. This is a question, just to clarify for the record. Looking at attachment A, it's regarding the 5% COLA. So I just want to clarify, are all employees getting a 5% adjustment? Or is that just a 5% per department?
5% COLA applies to all city employees. The market adjustment is then, as part of the compensation study.
Okay, so each individual will get a 5%? Okay, I'm seeing.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, it's your pleasure on this one.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2022-08 on the second reading.
Second?
I'll second. I'm scared to now.
These folks are kind of shy. All right, all in favor, let me know by the raised hand. Let it carries. Okay, financial report?
Good afternoon.
Ms. McElhanlon, you want to read it in?
Financial report for month ending January 31st, 2022, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, so we're looking at financials for the month ending January of 2022. So it's kind of the same format as you'll be used to seeing. So taking a look first at the larger areas of revenue within the general fund, the property tax and sales tax. So property tax, we're at an 84% of our budget and collection, so that's really good. As expected, the January numbers were high, and so that percentage kind of started leveling out. So that percent to budget that we talked about is kind of flattening. 101,000 of this is from prior year in penalties. So we kind of dug in a little bit and asked some questions of Mr. Reeves. And some of the feedback we got was just the hike in the real estate market. So some people who are selling properties, who had back taxes and those kind of things, were being able to collect those. So that's why we're seeing such a large amount of difference there from this year to last year. As a best guess, I mean, there's no, you know, real identifier there, but that would be a best guess. On the sales tax side, continuing to be strong, current collections right at $3 million, with a budget of 8.6. We are still trending 15% over fiscal year '21. February numbers have come in. They're showing a 9% increase over fiscal year '21. But we don't have the actual report from the comptroller yet. So there are some future payments and prior payments and those kind of things. We always have to take into consideration once we get that big report.
Is that December? What, when?
February would be from December. But remember, in January, we had a couple of large future payments. So they kind of offset each other month to month. So that's why we look at an average more than actually a month to month. And we can identify those once we get further into that.
Do we estimate that we may be behind on the property tax collections? Since we're only at 84% totally collected right now, and the current collections are less than 84% of 10.7 million?
No, typically, looking over the last three years, they range anywhere from 68% the year that we had COVID, remember, and they allowed multiple payments throughout the year. Average is about 79 to 80 this point, so 84 actually is a little bit above average, what we've been seeing. But it's just kind of a best guess on when people pay, because really, one day, if they're paying at the end of the month, can make all the difference. So we already have quite a bit of property tax collected for February. So, you know, we really start to see a slowdown coming out of February and into March. But we expect about a 98% collection rate.
People that are on partial pay, there's just, they're not being assessed the penalty and interest. But their money won't, their payments won't hit, be finalized until the end of the year.
Until that, was it June? I'll have to go back and look at what the date is, but it splits it up into two, so. So that is a factor, but we do see a pretty extreme slowdown after February. So looking at your general fund revenues, this is just broken out by categories as we do it in the budget book. Couple things to point out here. Our intergovernmental is better than budget and better than '21, but that's largely because of a timing issue on the payment that we receive from KISD for our resource officers. And then also, sometimes the county contract will get paid at the end of one month and at the beginning of another. So it'll look like two payments in one month. So that's timing on those areas. Recreation revenue is better than budget, but behind last year. And we've, you know, put a lot of thought into this and done some research. And back in January, you remember, there were still a lot of schools in Texas offering online schooling. So we had a lot more travel going on and a lot more RV use. And so the areas that we're seeing some decline is in the RV areas. But it hasn't affected hotel tax, so just kind of an anomaly there. I think we just had a really strong year last year, so we're seeing a little bit of a decline there. Services, they're higher than estimated due to EMS revenue, so those are really hard to predict. So they could be really high one month and really low the next, but that's what's driving that increase there. Okay, here's your graphical representation of the revenues. I've been showing you the last few months. What you'll kind of see here is it's not proportionate now, because property tax collections are so high. So as the sales tax continues to come in and property tax continues to decline, you'll start to see that level out there. And everything else is tracking pretty much in line with how we budgeted it. On the sales tax, this is kind of a chart that I gave you last month, but I went ahead and pulled in three years of data. I know there were some questions on trends. But you can look at three years of data and look at the trends. I mean, the trends track very closely month to month. Whether, you know, there's an increase or even a close increase, you're still seeing the same kind of trend. So as we forecast, we can really use this based on just the trend line and then apply the percentage and averages to see kind of what we're going to forecast. You'll notice a dip in April of '21. But if you remember, that's February of '21 sales. So we all know that a lot of businesses were shut down and people were shut in in February. So my best guess would be that that's the reason we have a dip there in that month. On the expense side in the general fund, personnel, 3.8% more than '21s, which is about what we budgeted. Maintenance is better than budget, largely because of paving timing. So you're going to start seeing that gap close a little bit as well as we go into spring and early summer. Overall expenses are better than estimated budget. But again, this does fluctuate with supplies and maintenance specifically related to large purchases, primarily for streets, but some other maintenance items as well. And then the assets, again, you'll see this level out as we go through the year. Most of our asset, I mean, most of our transfers out are done monthly, but we had that one-time large transfer out to asset replacement, so that's what's throwing that there. Okay, same kind of graph for the expenses. Again, your capital is still at 0%. We do have a few expenditures there, but it's not enough to really drive that percent up at all. But again, once we start doing some streets things, you're going to see that come up. And the same thing on the water side, you know, anything we're putting in the ground is capital, but we're just not doing any of that on the general fund side yet that's substantial enough to drive that percentage difference. Okay, looking at the water fund, so water sales are still trailing behind budget and trailing behind last year. But the good news is January was a little bit up from last year. So our estimation is that as sewer averaging starts coming to an end, and with these dry few months, we're going to start seeing some people watering. Because a lot of people do water off of their, or irrigate off of their regular meter, so they're not irrigating because of sewer averaging months, so.
Can you remind me, did we set an increase schedule for water rates?
We did. And so we had a 2, was it 2%? I'll have to go back and look. I believe it was 2% for fiscal year '22. And that didn't go into effect until November, because we're billing a month behind. So the November bills reflected that, but consumption was way down, like almost 20% down is specifically just in irrigation, and then residential was 12 or 13% down is what it's been trending, so.
And then what do we have laid out for next year?
Same. And so we, yes, we kind of did that same trend that when we did that long range water plan, so that we could go ahead and start kind of estimating based on consumption, what those revenues were going to look like. So I really feel like that's going to help us, because we already know what's in place. And so when we start doing budget estimates for revenues, we're going to have a lot better idea, just looking at multiple years of consumption average and those kind of things. So feel a lot better about that. Remember that sewer averaging for the first billing cycle ended February 20th, and the last one will end on March 10th. So again, that's when we expect to see some watering going on. On the sewer side, still better than budget, still ahead of last year. So again, more stable because less weather dependent. We will recalculate those residential sewer averages, and you'll see that on April bills for all residential customers. Okay, overview of revenues in the water fund, same kind of method here. Categorized like we see them in the budget book. So total fund revenues running a little bit behind estimated budget, but gaining a little bit from how we were behind last month. Reuse is picking up, and we're seeing an increase in watering, especially in golf courses and sports fields and those kind of things with it being dry. And again, the shortfall in that other category is primarily related to water tap fees from some large projects that we had in fiscal year '21 that we just haven't seen the need for those taps this year in new development. They already having those taps. That could change with some new developments we have coming up, so we're just watching that really close. The revenues by category in your graphical, so sewer at 47%, water at 46%. It's pretty close to the way we kind of estimated it in the budget. We like to track that to make sure that we're allocating percentages right on revenues. So pretty good there. On the expense side of the water fund, we're better than budget in most categories. But again, remember that we're not producing as much water, we're not using as many supplies, and we don't have as much maintenance. So we'll see as watering picks up if that levels out, but we'll continue to monitor that also. Same graphical representation here on expenses. Same story kind of on transfers out, it's a large percentage right now. But they're scheduled out over months, but we had that one-time large transfer that's driving this up. So as the other things even out, then that will even out.
That's the asset replacement?
Yes, that 330,000 that we moved to asset replacement from the water fund.
Would you explain transfers out? Where does it basically go?
So transfer out is considered an expense to the fund that the money's coming out of. Transfer in is considering a revenue to the fund it's going to, but it's in our fund. So it's not really moving cash per se, it's just moving budget. So when we take money out of the water fund as a total and give it to asset replacement, that's considered a transfer out. Same thing we do with like streets fees and things like that from the water fund to the general fund, same concept there. Okay, just a quick update on the water side. You know, we've been working on our advanced metering infrastructure projects, so I wanted to give you just a quick update. Phase one that was implemented throughout fiscal year '21 had 2,599 accounts. Happy to report that we're reading 90% of those AMI. If you remember, we were only expecting about 85%. So we're expecting about a 72 man-hour savings just in read time. We've been able to detect several major leaks on the day that they've occurred instead of waiting till the next bill cycle, which is really good for us and our customers. And then being able to create those data logs for a customer when they walk into the office instead of sending the guys out is huge. Phase two implementations in progress. We have 3,300 accounts in that phase. We're anticipating read time savings in that phase of 80 hours per year. The data collectors are installed. We've already have some AMI reads being received in the office and hoping to be substantially complete on that by June of '22, pending that we can receive all the materials.
Real quick, can you remind us where phase two meters are located?
Phase two is cycle one and pieces of cycle three. So we have a data collector at Methodist Encampment. And then we have another one that we installed at College Cove. And I don't know if you know where that is, but it's off of Loop 534, kind of behind Tom Daniels, if you look straight up.
Really two completely different areas?
Completely different areas. And those things read like a cell tower, so they're reading out in a circle. So sometimes if we say, this one's designed for cycle two, it might actually be picking up pieces of other cycles. So it just depends on the weather. We've noticed has a little bit of determination day to day. But the way it works is it reads once an hour, so those meters are pinging the data collector once an hour. And if it doesn't read one day, but it read within a day on either side, then that's the reads we're using. They're coming in that rapidly. So far, it's been, it's been really good. The next one will go at River Hill, and then I believe the other one's going at the summit, and that'll be for phase three. And that should cover most everything, because we're getting, they said 75 feet is kind of an ideal height, and some of them, we're getting them up over 125, 150, so I think that's why we're getting a lot more.
See, the hills can work for you.
Yeah. So Tony did send us an email yesterday, and based on what he's seeing from the phase he's working on, we're over 50% total, so looking really good. Okay, quick update on these smaller funds. Golf funds still doing great, still operating 8% ahead of fiscal year '21. On the revenue side, we are a little bit better than budget on the expenditure side, but we do have a couple of large things in the works that we're hoping that we'll see come through, the irrigation controller and some equipment that we have budgeted, that we haven't seen come through yet. Bobby did report that we have 1,000, almost 1,100 more rounds played this year to date than last year to date. So definitely attracting some more visitors, I think, from the work they're doing out there. On the development services side, on the permits and fees revenues, we are behind what we're predicting budget to date, but remember, that's a calculation. And on development services, we really don't have a percentage, we just divide by 12. So it's difficult to project, but we are ahead of where we were this time last year. We do have some projects kicking off, so we're looking for that to start picking up here pretty soon as we're going into spring as well. And then on the hot fund, I know y'all had a good workshop today talking about some of the plans for the Eclipse. The good news is we're 15% ahead of fiscal year '21 still, so hotel business is doing well. We did talk about the increase in promotion, but also the CBB is doing a lot more in promoting across the state as well, so. Upcoming items, just adding these, I know they get a little bit longer each time, so we won't go into all these. But just for your information, we have already started the budget process, so already estimating revenues. We've completed budget training with all of our department employees who are going to be inputting budgets. We did push the annual comprehensive financial report to the first meeting in March, simply due to the fact that we're waiting on another audit that's part of ours. So we can't present until they do, but we're ready to go, so we'll be presenting that to you on the 8th. And then, so departments are going to start entering their budget requests here really soon. And then we'll start having meetings with the divisions in finance and talking through their specific budget requests and, you know, how they relate to Curval 2050 as well. And then we have council workshops scheduled in June and July, so more information to come on that. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
Do we always have the workshops, the June and July? Is that always the timeframe?
Yeah, we don't start getting preliminary property tax until April. So it takes us a little while to work through that piece. And then, you know, just, that's kind of historically how it's been. I mean, of course, we're open to suggestions if y'all want to do something different.
Maybe it was because we were looking at fee schedules or different rate studies. And I just remember having some interplay with budgeting items before.
Right, some of that kind of stuff, if it starts coming in, then we'll start having those discussions so that it's kind of a preemptive.
Yeah, more of a smaller piece of the budget.
That's right. And we've already started that process as well. Any questions?
I'd just like to note that you start budget process in February, and then it's six months until it's finalized and presented to council, right?
Well, September, so I'd have to count on my fingers, is it six months?
Okay, all right, yeah.
It's a long process.
It's a long process, but it's detailed.
Yes.
And by the time, you know, by the time we get that budget done, it has gone over plenty.
We have a lot of fun with budgets. Some disagree with me, but.
Fun.
Fun with the budget, okay. All right, I'll take your word for it. Do we have any speakers to this item?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm going to turn it over to Trina for TERS.
Yeah, Trina? Did we have one? Okay.
Annual report of the Tax and Recovery Investment Zone, number one, city of Curval, Texas, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So we are speaking of the TERS annual report, this for fiscal year ended September 30th of 2021. This picture here on the bottom left is an aerial view of the downtown TERS district. And then the picture on the right is a map version of that dedicated area. And that's generally bound by the Pasco Avenue to the northwest, Guadalupe River to the west, Travis Street to the south, and Barnett and Aranza Streets to the east. Guadalupe River to the west, Travis Street to the south, and Barnett and Aranza Streets to the east. Had to write those down. Okay, so most of you know, but for those who don't, TERS stands for Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. And the City of Curville in 2018 established this zone to encourage private investment in the downtown Curville area with the goals of creating new taxable values and increasing economic activity. So this area encompasses approximately 477 acres of property, and those are bound by the areas we just stated. TERS funds can be used for public improvements related to the streets, water and sewer infrastructure, parks and open spaces, and possibly economic development grants. And we just want to be clear that not all property tax dollars collected in the TERS district go into this fund. Only the increment above the property taxes collected in the base year can go into that fund. And FYI, the base year was 542,000. So anything over that collected is allowed to go into that fund. Okay, so this is the second year that we've actually reported our TERS activity. And just a quick overview of what's required for the TERS annual reporting. So Texas law requires the city to submit an annual report to each taxing unit that levies taxes on properties within the TERS. So those entities are the state comptroller, Kerr County, their lateral roads, KISD, UGRA, and Headwaters. And that report must include the following. The amount and sources of revenue, in our case, our property tax. The amount and purpose of the expenditures. So we currently don't have any budgeted expenditures in the TERS fund, so we're just trying to grow the fund balance for the moment. Amount of indebtedness, so if we were to have any debt related to this TERS area, that would need to be reported. The tax increment base and the current captured appraised value in the TERS, so stating that 542,000 and any appraised values above that. And then captured appraised values shared by the city and other taxing units, so everybody that's collecting property tax basically. And the total amount of the increment received for the year. So this slide here is a three-year look at the TERS budget and the ending fund balances. So for fiscal year 2020, that was the first year that we made an incremental move into the TERS fund, and that gained $22,915. So small start, but fiscal year 2021's budget, we based that on the certified tax roll we received in July of 2020. And that was, we set that budget at $49,000. But unfortunately, our TERS increment fell short that year. We did have some properties file for an exemption after the fact that we got the tax rolls. So that obviously brought the revenues down. Fiscal year 21 ended up at $58,605. And then so for our budget 2022, we built that off of our tax roll received in July of 21. And that budget was set a little bit higher, but of course, you have new values that come online, new building and renovation in the area. So that's all taken into account on the appraised value. So we do maintain a 98% collection rate on our property tax. And so we're hopeful that in FY22, we can end the year with close to that fund balance of $121,000 that we've set. Okay, this here is the actual report that we've submitted to the other taxing entities for fiscal year 2021. In your section number one, you have the amount of revenue collected for the year, that's the $35,691. And your section number two are your budgeted expenditures, which we do not have any. Section number three is the bond indebtedness at zero. And then your section number four is the freeze-adjusted taxable values of those properties minus that base year's appraised values. And then that reflects overall to give you the incremental change in appraised values. So it's a lot that goes into that to calculate. Number five section, it shows you the other taxing entities that we share appraised property values with and their current rates they collect. So this is 2021's numbers. And then number six section shows you the tax levied values in comparison to what was actually collected. And net, that is the increment that we moved into the TERS fund of the 35,000. Sorry, went too fast there. Okay, and this last slide is just a budget report, basically the same report as the 2021 setup. The categories are the same. The overall increment is subject to change based on what we actually collect this year, just if we have any exemptions after the fact or anyone buys a property and they're exempt from paying property tax.
Counsel, do you have questions?
I'm going to ask a question, just real quick. When you mentioned exemptions, it reminded me of something that I've been meaning to ask about the particular homestead exemption in the legislature. And I didn't know if anyone, you know, Julie or anyone could speak to. The law in the past has been that you have to own your primary property January 1st in order to make application. And there was some legislation that was ongoing about allowing someone to apply for that exemption anytime during the year. Do you know if that passed?
I don't know, we could check.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. Because it might affect budget and, you know, versus, you know, when you apply that exemption.
That certainly would be more applicable probably to the overall city budget. Within the TERS zone, there's very few residential areas.
It was, it was kind of an offshoot of what we were talking about, so I apologize.
We'll track it down for you.
Do we have any speakers to this item?
No, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion on this matter?
No motion.
No motion, that's right, yeah. Okay, now, I need some clarification on a couple of items. My understanding was that, well, my desire is 8A would be considered in the executive session. But also, is my understanding that 8B was to be considered in the executive session? Can you enlighten me on that?
That is an item that is eligible for executive session should the council desire to do so. The request was made for that to be in consideration and possible action.
I'm sorry, what? On 8B, what?
The item was requested to be in the consideration and possible action, agenda item.
Okay, all right. All right, then.
So Mayor, if we can do this, if we want to wait for 8A till the executive session, we have that on 9A, I think, right? All right, so, yeah, we have that on 9A, and then we have 8B on 9B. So there's nothing going to be, I would suggest that if nothing's going to happen in 8A, that we go ahead and move with that, and then the same thing with 8B, and then go to the executive session.
All right, so is your recommendation that 8A and 8B be go to the executive session?
If that's what council wants, I think.
So what do we do, Mike, if there are citizen speakers signed up to speak to these items that are eligible for executive session?
I think, well, per your rules, you need to hear them.
I'm sorry, what?
Per your rules, you need to hear them. I mean, they've signed up under your rules.
But if we go into executive session for both of those, then we would hear all public comments for both A and B.
No.
One at a time.
Well, okay, in light of that, I'm going to make, okay, I'm going to make a motion that 8A be in executive session.
I mean, if there's any citizen speakers for 8A.
Oh, do we have any speakers right?
Mr. We don't have speakers for 8A. Appointment to the Curville Public Utility Board of Trustees, position number four.
Okay, so I move that 8A be moved to executive session.
I second that. We have to use the number.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
551.074.
Right, okay. Yeah, 551.074, yeah.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, all in favor of 8A going to executive session. Okay, we have speakers, sign up for 8B.
Personnel matters regarding city attorneys to the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal, or to hear a complaint or charge against is requested by council member Garcia. This item is eligible for executive session, 551.074. And we do have 12 citizen speakers signed up, we can cap it off at 10. I do have the first 10, it's up to you.
All right, okay, Mr. Garcia.
Well, since I requested this item, I'll just go ahead and introduce it, and then I guess we can hear from the speakers. First of all, I was surprised when I saw the agenda item that is before us this evening, as I'm sure some of you were as well. And let me start off by saying that my request was, I requested with the support of Mayor Blackburn, an agenda item titled Personnel Matters Regarding the City Attorney. And in parentheses, this item is eligible for executive session pursuant to section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. The agenda item that is presented for us to consider is, as read by the city secretary, and I guess you can see on your screens right there, Personnel Matters Regarding the City Attorney as to the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal, or to hear a complaint or charge against as requested by council member Garcia. Let me be clear, this item is not presented as I requested, unlike the agenda item title would have you believe. And we can all agree, these two items are completely different. We all know the importance of the title of an agenda item, and the one on the agenda is completely different than the one I requested. Soon after the agenda was posted, I spoke with the city manager over the phone and requested that the agenda be modified to correct the title of the agenda item. I was informed, one, that the title would not be corrected to reflect my agenda item as requested. And two, that the city manager relied on the city attorney's office, who stated it needed to be worded differently. Since then, there has been word around the city that I'm attempting to do many things. Many different things such as reassign the city attorney, change his duties, or even dismiss him. That is not the case. So when I say I'm surprised when I saw this item that's before us, it's because this item was written by the city attorney, not me. And it was altered without my knowledge prior to it being posted. And I'm not, and now I'm being held accountable for something I didn't even do. So you may be wondering, well, what is this about then? And while I wasn't intending to state any of this publicly, but due to the altering of my agenda item by the city attorney, this changes, that changes the meaning in a way that misleads the public. I find it necessary to clarify what this is about. And I intended to address a public display of inappropriate and insubordinate conduct by the city attorney that occurred during a recess of a city council regular meeting on November 9th. And I was planning on addressing this internally and handling it that way in executive session. When I approached the mayor, I asked for his support to put this item on the agenda, and that's what I told him. Unfortunately, the public has now been led to assume something different. And let me be clear, this isn't personal. In fact, nothing's personal unless you let it be. This is a professional manner, matter, and I intend to handle this topic that way. And each council member up here has the duty to protect, to honor, the respect, and the integrity that comes with not only serving on council, but also serving as employees of the city, who are also all considered public officials.
I'm going to make a comment, and then we'll go from there. When Mr. Garcia came to me with this request, I understood it would be on the executive agenda and that it would be stated simply. And so we're now at a different place in terms of how it's stated. But I did feel like it was something that we needed to be addressed. He asked for it to be addressed in private, not in public. I agreed, but that obviously is not what has happened.
Mayor, can I respond to that, this issue? This is, council member Garcia talked about being surprised. I was surprised by this agenda item as well. My role with agendas, you know, goes all week. But Friday morning, the city secretary usually sends me and the city manager the agenda, and we look at it for wording. Me in particularly, I look at it obviously for legal issues. And when I look at agenda items, I'm always curious about, you know, transparency and fair notice. You want people to know what you all are going to talk about and perhaps even take action on. And consistency, consistency is very important as well. And that's what I did. The city manager came into my office and said that council member Garcia knew about the change in the agenda item. And I asked the city manager to have council member Garcia call me and talk to me about it. Because again, had no information about what he intended to talk about. And I was capturing, if you go back to 551.074, that's just right out of the law, inserting my title, and then at the end, that it's basically being sponsored by him.
So in other words, you're saying because you had no knowledge of what the topic was, you had to use the broad breadth and the broad brush?
That's right, and if we would have kept it the way council member Garcia wanted it, I would have told you that there was a risk. I certainly would have been comfortable going into executive session or taking part in this item based upon that wording.
Counsel, I mention questions? Yes, Ms. Clarkson?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak right now to transparency. There were two items for future agendas made in a public meeting on February 8th. But for whatever reason, this item was not made as a public and transparent item that all of the council members would have had a chance to determine if it should be on an agenda or not. Now, I'm not saying that the way that the item was placed on the agenda was illegal. It certainly was under our procedural rule 3.1C. But I'm suggesting that there is a lack of transparency when two items for future agendas are being made in public and one is being made in private on the same day. I think that's a natural question to ask because we recently conducted an annual evaluation of the city attorney. So I had no say and no choice on an agenda item that I might not particularly think is appropriate to spend our time on when there are things that I want to do to promote the welfare of the city for our citizens. And I'm not saying I agree or disagree, but I didn't know. One might say you could find out in the meeting, you don't need to know in advance. And as I stated, I disagree with that. I find that this is a distraction at best, and at worst, that it's an attempt to undermine the credibility of our city attorney. Why? That I'm not sure. I really don't know the motivation behind that. But I just wanted to make that statement before we have further discussion in the executive session. And if there's anything publicly that comes from the executive session, I would have further comments based on that, as long as it didn't violate anything that was said in the executive session. And I also would like to request that, Mr. Mayor, you consider asking us not to bring any electronic devices into executive session.
Yeah, okay.
And I would just also really just echo what you said, Clarkson. I was surprised to see this. Again, we have items for future agendas, and that's on every agenda there. And it wasn't there, and I'm not questioning the mayor's agreeing to this. But I just felt like it was, it was just not the right way for this to have been brought forward. And it should have been, should have been mentioned here so that, again, we all had the opportunity to say yea or nay to it. I did, I called the city attorney, asked him about it, and he didn't really know anymore about it. I know Mr. Garcia, on his letterhead, could, you know, please call me if you have questions. Well, we can't do that, and we can't talk to all of us about that. So it didn't, it didn't get us anywhere. So I just feel like it was, it was just maybe done almost behind our back. And I just didn't appreciate that.
I second that total lack of transparency, and I was blindsided by it, and I don't appreciate it.
Okay.
Do we have speakers?
We have speakers, all right. Let's limit it to 10, because I mean, that's our rules anyway. Okay, moving ahead.
Nikki Keynes?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is getting a little bit out of control, and I believe that I'm gonna lay it in your, in your court. I don't know what or how far your discussions are gonna go tonight regarding Mr. Hayes' past actions as city attorney, but I know I was present here on November ninth, and I observed the altercation initiated by Mr. Hayes with Councilman Garcia during a restroom break. It followed an exchange that had been in session, where the councilman had pressed for legal proof and clarification of how the changing of the election date could occur or did occur versus what was stated in the city charter. The voters got no answer to that. That altercation between the two of them occurred here, in this room, and in public. It became obvious to me and other people here that Mr. Hayes' physical demeanor and tone of voice were disrespectful and unprofessional towards the councilmen. I've not seen Mr. Hayes lose his cold with any other councilman or councilmember, all of whom he was hired to give legal counsel. Whether you like Mr. Hayes or you love Mr. Hayes, I hope you're gonna be open-minded in executive session, as each of you and each of us as voters have expectations for the behavior and the speech of our elected officials, as well as our paid city personnel. To me, it's a matter of accountability. Other issues, as you say, and I know because I've been here, have come before this council. And I've been here when you, as a council, have passed on an issue, and it never gets brought back up again. I wish that you would address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
I need your name and...
Oh, sorry. Please don't let him say it. I guess I was...
Nikki Caines, eighteen oh nine, Mountain Laurel.
Yeah, let's, let's go through the speakers that are signed up.
I have a point of order, actually.
What's your point of order?
So there's nowhere in our rules that I find that states that we can only limit it to ten speakers. I just looked at them right now.
I was under the assumption.
What assumption?
But I tell you, as we go through, we'll get a clarification, see if we do ten or twelve. Okay, next speaker.
Pablo Brinkman.
Counsel, Mayor Blackburn, I kinda struggle tonight. I struggle coming up here to your, ma'am, the, the former speaker. I both like and I love my case. So I got, I'm guilty of both of those, as well as a lot of people in this room. I struggle because I wonder if some of what's coming out here is out of ignorance versus arrogance. And I hear Roman about you, Councilman Garcia, saying and clarifying that. And I had appreciated that, too, because I think that was, honestly, you're trying to come on there, probably getting a lot of people coming at you. I wanna kinda take a different theme tonight. Two is my theme tonight. Two twenty-two twenty-two. That's our date, is that right? Mr. Mayor?
That's it. I've declared it.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. There's too many, too much and too many things of trying to find negativity, of finding things going wrong. When the man, the woman said about Councilman and, and Mr. Hayes, I'm not in every session, but I watch every session. And I watch pretty much everything that goes on in the city as much as I can, because my profession is very much tied into it. And I think that's something I need to share tonight. But I have seen discord behind, I've seen discord among council members, and it's almost like you're, you're guilty and you have to, you come out. It's like a sibling fight sometimes where we're trying to create something. And, you know, I have, we all learned far too much in the last five years, four years, about fake news. You know, the amount of soft costs, and I'm a businessman, and lean process is something you really try to do. Soft costs, what it's cost the city to go chase, whether it's May or whether it's November, I think we've all realized it's May, and it should've been May, and it's gonna be May. We had an unprecedented thing, Councilman, that, that with COVID, and I get that. The only person that's gonna be short-term is Ms. Hughes. And so I think we, we should concentrate on less coming two together. We have more things to be thankful for right now. In my profession, we have more developers, more quality people coming to Kerrville. Why? Because we're open for business. We're open for business. Every person that I talk to, Naria One, including today, asked, "How's it to work with staff?" And I said, "They're great. They're great." If we drag things through the mud here, it's gonna affect how people perceive Kerrville. And so I think we all have a duty, including everybody up here and the city, citizens, to come two together. And so there's an opportunity, I got fifty-two seconds, I'm gonna get it all out. You know, it's just, there's, there's too much going on that's positive here, and there's too much opportunity. And we're in the twos today. So I think if you had Councilman some words with Mr. Hayes, or he had with you, I'm a businessman. What I do is, I'm all about transparency. I'm not about telling this young lady about something that I have a problem with. I go to that individual, and I talk about it. Now headlines, and fake news, and things that have come up of late are making headlines. And there's nothing that's coming out of it that's positive. So let's come together, let's treat this kind of as an opportunity, because you work for me and the citizens. And when you first came on, I said, "What are you gonna do? And you're gonna be a uniter." I think you have a great opportunity, Roman. You're young, you got a hell of a good future in front of you, but let's work on bringing together and have this a little bit more on even ground. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah? Good evening, my name is Katie Chapman Hannah. I live at thirteen forty-three Bandera Highway. And I just wanted to take a moment to say that I have also been observing and watching these meetings for a long time. And I have myself observed other members of this council jumping on someone else when they feel that they've been put out. And I would like to see that everyone is held to the same standard. Therefore, I would like to put forth, I would like to put forth this statement. A couple of questions in clarification in regard to the agenda item. The agenda packet includes the formal request letter submitted by Mr. Garcia, asking this item to be placed on the agenda pursuant to procedural rule 3.1C. This same letter states the requested subject matter and identifies Mayor Blackburn as the second council member supporting the item being placed on the agenda. The second part of the relevant procedural rule states the following. Quote, "The city manager shall place the subject on the agenda if the subject is requested by a council member in accordance with the section," end quote. Even though Mr. Garcia submitted his request in accordance with procedural rule 3.1C, and the same rule mandates the city manager place the agenda, the subject on the agenda, the agenda item in front of you today seems considerably different than that which was requested by Mr. Garcia and Mayor Blackburn. Mayor Blackburn, when did you first become aware that the subject matter you requested was not to be placed on the agenda? Were you consulted prior to the meeting, agenda being posted, or given an explanation justifying the city manager disregarding the procedural rule and refusing to place subject matter as requested on the agenda? So to be clear, Mr. Garcia, did you request that the council consider appointment or employment of a new city attorney? Did you request that they redefine the job duties of this city attorney? Did you request that they consider reassigning the city attorney, or dismissing the city attorney? Or did you request that there was any disciplinary action to be taken against the city attorney? If so, I am understanding you correctly. You were attempting to privately address a very public incident that occurred at a city meeting, where the city attorney was seen finger-waving and verbally reprimanding a city council member for simply asking for legal clarification on a matter before council. Is that correct?
That's correct, and no, I didn't intend to do any of that.
Very good. And the language used here on the agenda of modified the request, it seems to make it sound more inflammatory and combative, and with a much broader scope than was intended, if that's what I understand. And in short, I think we are here today because the city attorney made a display of insubordination at a public meeting directed toward his supervisors, namely the body, the People's Council. And rather than simply allow the council to address it internally, the same city attorney chose instead to inflame citizens by misrepresenting the intent of Mr. Garcia. And I have seen that and observed that myself on many occasions. I merely want to put it on record that I can see that from your end as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Michelle Yanis?
I think I'm gonna actually piggyback off Pablo. I had statements that I wanted to make, but I'm glad that Councilmember Garcia clarified, you know, what this was. But I was gonna finish, actually, with a gospel I'd heard on Sunday morning, which is, Jesus said to His disciples, "To you who hear I say, love your enemies; do good to those who hate you; bless those who curse you; pray for those who mistreat you; and to the person who strikes you on one cheek, offer the other one as well; and from the person who takes your cloak, do not withhold even your tunic. Give to everyone who asks of you, and from the one who takes what is yours, do not demand it back. Do to others as you would have them do to you. For if you love those who love you, what credit is that to you? For even sinners love those who love them. And if you do good to those who do good to you, what credit is that to you? Even sinners do the same. Be merciful, just as your fathers merciful." I worked with Mike Hayes on the Charter Committee, and none of us could've predicted the pandemic of 2020. And I think that going back to business, which is May elections, that's what I was gonna come up here to say was what needs to happen, but in the spirit of unity, just do your job.
Thank you.
Bethany Pucci?
Bethany Pucci, I'm four eighteen Crest Ridge Drive. I just have a couple of questions, and this is to you, Mr. Mayor. When you co-sponsored this agenda item, was it your understanding that Mr. Garcia's intent was to discuss dismissing Mr. Hayes?
I'm sorry, say it again.
When, when you co-sponsored this agenda item, and I don't know if it's actually called co-sponsoring or what the legal term is, but was it your understanding that Mr. Garcia's intent was to dismiss Mr. Hayes?
No.
Okay. And you kind of said that earlier, I just wanted to make sure I understood it right. And, and you also said you didn't, you weren't aware of the change either. When did you become aware that the wording had been changed?
When I received the agenda.
Okay, so that's when, that's the same time it gets posted publicly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the, the third question I have is for Councilman Garcia. It seemed to me, when I read the wording of the original agenda item, and then the rewording of what went on to the agenda, it seemed to me that, Mr. Garcia, your original wording was very honoring, and that your intent was to handle the issue with Mr. Hayes privately instead of having a public shaming. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Billy Crane?
Billy Crane, three twenty-four Bob White Drive. I stand to speak in support of Mike Hayes. I'm friends with Mike Hayes, and we serve on our church's leadership team together. I can say confidently that Mike is a man who is extremely careful about following the rules and making sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do, as well as doing what is right. Mike is wise and prudent, and he has given excellent counsel to our church, as well as to me personally. And I'm grateful to know that he is our town attorney, and it gives me great confidence in this city organization to know that a man like him is, is serving here. And in regards to just some comments that just, I have to acknowledge that people have said, and used a term in flaming about language, or that somehow Mike, via inflaming this, I've been with Mike Hayes multiple times over the past four months, and he has never mentioned this incident to me. In fact, I spent multiple hours with him on Saturday. And I wasn't aware of it until someone brought it to my attention, other than him. I, as a citizen of Kerrville, give my full and unreserved support to Mike Hayes as serving as our town attorney, and I'm grateful for this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Lewis?
Peter Lewis, two forty Galbraith. Those of you who know me know that I love to talk, but I don't like to talk publicly unless it's something I'm passionate about. And, Mr. Mayor, what I'm gonna say is factual, because I wrote it. And I'm speaking on behalf of my friend Mike Hayes. I wanna piggyback on what Mr. Brinkman said and about what Mr. Crane just said. I've known, so I'm speaking on behalf of city attorney Mike Hayes and his integrity, his professional qualifications, and his personal character. I've known him for more than twenty years. I've had the privilege of working with him through my work with the city, and as a member of various community organizations. Mike Hayes is a good man. He's highly qualified and a tenured attorney with a keen and discerning legal mind. He's a family man. His honesty and integrity are evident in all that he does. His love for and commitment to the city shine through always. I do not see him as a divisive person. I do, I have never experienced an inflammatory, any kind of rhetoric from Mike in any of my dealings with him. He's always measured, he's always thoughtful. He's a servant leader, and I'm proud to call him my friend. Mike also thankfully has a very sophisticated sense of humor, which those of you in public service know is, goes without measure, it's necessary. So thank you for your, thank you for hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Fitch?
Cheryl Fitch, four oh three Forest Ridge Drive. I, too, was concerned about the difference in the tenor from the first agenda description that Roman Garcia put, and then what actually happened. And so I'm just asking, instead of pointing here or there and, and blaming, it seems like a lot of this discussion wouldn't go on if the communication was clear and very complete with each other. So I'm just asking that people go the extra mile and make sure that, especially on agenda items, that everything that was meant and is worded correctly and not changed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Sigerman?
Yes, my name is Mike Sigerman. I live at four thousand Comanche Trace Drive here in Kerrville, Texas. And I'm hearing a lot of facts being said by different people, and I think the true facts about what's going on here is, we've been going through, as, as I said before, we've been going through the situation with this election for ten months or almost a year. Mike Hayes is consistently giving his legal opinion about what is legal, what the city should do. He has consistently been accused of being wrong. He has been accused of not doing the right thing. Roman Garcia has constantly said that you're wrong, that this is not right, that we can't do this election in May, we have to do it in November. He has consistently ignored the city attorney's advice. He has listened to outside people. So there's a lot of history in what's happened here. I have witnessed many occasions in many council meetings where Mike has tried to explain that I have researched this, I have researched this, I am comfortable with what the legal opinion is, I'm comfortable that what the city is doing is legal. Yet he has been constantly rebuked by Roman Garcia at every council meeting, probably for the last year. No, you're not right. No, the city cannot have this election in May. No, the city must have this election in November. I understand a little frustration in Mike's tenor with Mr. Garcia. I know that there was an encounter, I know that there was, Mike was trying to get his point across to Roman Garcia that, please do not accuse the city of doing something illegal. And I would remind Roman Garcia, as I would remind all of you on city council, that Mike Hayes does not work for y'all. The city staff works for the city manager. You all work for us. So when Roman Garcia goes up to Mike Hayes and says, "Don't forget who you work for, remember who you work for," I think that's a little belligerent, and I think that's getting missed in all this conversation and all this encounter here. And I think most people in Kerrville would say, "We're really tired of hearing outside people, city council members, telling the city attorney that he is not doing his job, that he does not know what he's doing, that he is guiding the city in the wrong direction," and basically saying that the city is doing something illegal. So all the people that come up here and say that they heard an encounter, or this or that, remember, Mike Hayes is the city attorney, he represents the city, he does not work for the council, he is guided by the council, but he does not work for the council. So when you go and tell Mike Hayes, "Hey, don't forget who you work for," I think you deserve a little rebuke. a little rebuke.
Thank you.
William Rector.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, William Rector, seven oh five Water Street. I am here tonight in support of Mike Hayes. He is one of the most solid members of our city staff. He is an excellent attorney. He researches matters thoroughly and gives an honest answer. You may not like his answer, Mr. Garcia, but it is researched and it is correct. And you need to respect him for that. And I would like also to remind you, I've sat behind this desk, and you're only the city council when you're sitting behind that desk. When you're not behind that desk, you're just like one of us. You're a citizen. And so I think there is some arrogance that is coming out here that we need to really address and look at. You need to realize that you're just a citizen when you're not behind that council. And I think Mr. Sigerman's remarks are very accurate, that Mike Hayes is a city attorney. He is an excellent city attorney. He does not work for the council. He works for the city, and he does a very good job, which he has done for many, many years. And many of us, like myself, appreciate him and appreciate the work that he does. I hope you're able to go into executive session, talk about this, put it to bed, and come back out. A better council. And, Mr. Garcia, I hope you learn something from this discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have one more citizen speaker, if you'd like to hear.
Yes.
Gail Wright.
Gail Wright, five twelve Stevens Street. I just want to clarify the events that took place in November of 2021. The city attorney, who does work for the city council, approached a member of the city council and acted in an insubordinate manner. So an employee was disrespectful to one of his bosses. Was it wrong for the boss to try and have a private discussion with this employee? Why did the city attorney, the employee, rewrite the employer's request? Does the employee think that he can pick and choose which of his bosses he will be respectful to?
Thank you.
And that's the end of the citizen speakers.
I'm sorry. Yeah, one question here, then Ms. Clarkson. Okay, you come to the mic. Pablo Brinkman, two twenty-five Waggaman. Is there a way that, and I don't know the legalese or the vernacular, but is there a way that we could have avoided this if it was avoidable indeed, as Roman states it could have been, before an agenda's put out? So that, I don't know, that if it's my words and I want to put my words in something, I want to critique them, or I want to say, yes, that's what I meant, or I didn't mean. Is there a way to streamline that possibly, so we're not going to be going down this?
Well, let me tell you. We followed procedure. A council member came to me requesting that this be dealt with in an executive session. I agree. So I signed off on that, on that request. My understanding was, it would be an executive session. It would not be what we've gone through tonight.
But my understanding-
And we did follow procedure.
Yes.
But if a council member comes to me and wants something on the agenda, and I sign off on that, then it goes on the agenda. And other council members have said, "Well, I was blindsided by this." Hey, we follow procedure.
Right. But I understood that Mr. Garcia also wanted it on the public as well. Is that not true, Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Garcia? That I wanted-
You wanted it to be public as well as in executive session?
But the way it works is that, yeah, go ahead. I'm not going to talk.
Yeah. So, no, my intent was to just have this in executive session. The reason I think why there may be some confusion, and maybe it's a mistake on my part, and I can admit that if possible, but looking at the agenda, the reason why it's listed twice here, and I think it's good to clarify, A B and nine B, executive session, the title, if you look at the agenda, it says, "City Council may, as permitted by law, adjourn into executive session at any time to discuss any matter listed above." And it's listed above the executive session. So I try to get it on an item which is under consideration of possible action above the executive session, which is what we usually do in most cases, so that we could go into executive session for it.
Yes, sir.
And I anticipated making a motion that we go into executive session on eight A and eight B, but that didn't work out.
Does that answer your question, sir?
It kind of does in a different way. I like that you said, "Hey, I may have made a mistake." I think, I think that's right there. I think we all make mistakes, and I've probably made some tonight. But I just, I just think if there's a way we can avoid some of this and go back to the positivity that we, this is, this is mounting. There's so many positive things coming to Kerrville right now in my career that I've never seen. And I grew up here, moved here in sixty-eight, and have seen things. And this is, there's a great opportunity right now, Roman, for you to champion this. At your age, at your level, I just think there's a way to come to that two number, and that's come together. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Ms. Clarkson?
Yeah, I brought this up before, Mr. Hayes, but I just want to say it again. The reason, my understanding is, the reason the item was presented on the agenda the way that it was, was because it was not discussed as a future agenda item. There was no context to what the item was. So it was any and everything that could fall under that item, because that's all the information that you had, and nothing else was provided. Nothing else was communicated. Nothing else was brought forward, which puts you in an awkward position and put us at risk. If you don't know what we might possibly discuss, then we need to put everything that we might possibly discuss on there, because that information wasn't provided. There was no specific direction to this item that was provided. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Yes. And, you know, I went back to Mr. Garcia's item request, and it clearly says agenda category, consideration and possible action.
Right. So everything we might consider or act upon.
And I want, I just want to make this statement again. You know, it was four, four-thirty. We had time to post the agenda. We do it more than seventy-two hours in advance. And I asked the city manager for Councilmember Garcia to please call. I've not spoken to Mr. Garcia about this incident at all since November ninth. I've offered to meet with him, and it didn't get a response.
Okay.
Well, that was, that was what I was going to bring up to Mr. Brinkman's point was, do you or do you not have an open door policy, Mr. Hayes?
I do.
Do you or do you not have an open door policy, Mr. Hoppy?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
So rather than to mitigate this out here, wouldn't it have made more sense for Mr. Garcia and Mr. Hayes to have a discussion amongst the two of them? That's my question.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll let Mr. Brinkman. Go ahead. Go ahead. You go to the mic.
I think my point, when I listen to all this, because I was in November when it was brought up.
So was I.
So was I.
In November, the voters didn't walk away knowing the rationale for the legal decision for scheduling the date for the election. We went through November. We went through January, or December. We went through January with no explanation.
It was explained repeatedly since December of 2020. It was explained repeatedly.
In the way you understand, when we were, when we came and we said, "Well, what is the legal explanation? Where's the documentation?"
Yeah.
And it is probably available now, but we didn't have it.
Okay. All right. I make a motion that we go into executive session.
A second.
Got a motion second?
Mayor, you let other council members have another opportunity to speak.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Just a couple of points regarding, if you look at my agenda item request, that document, it said, it stated at the very end of it to, "Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions regarding my request." I sent this to the city manager, city secretary, and the mayor per our procedural rules. I wasn't, Councilmember, I wasn't intending for the rest of council to try to contact me, because I knew that would be against the Open Meetings Act. And the reason why I didn't try to bring this up as a future agenda item at a regular meeting is because, like I said at the very beginning, I wanted to try to handle this matter internally and professionally without having, if I were to try to bring it up, I'm sure the rest of council would have asked what it's about. And so I went directly to the mayor, who, per our procedural rules, I was able to do to explain the situation to get this item on the agenda. I didn't want to have to explain that situation in front of everybody. But that's what it's had to turn out to be, unfortunately. So that's, that's, that's what I'm doing here. And when you say, "Go directly to the person that you had the incident with," well, council is actually, council does hire the city attorney. City attorney does work for the council. If you look at the city charter, it's in there. He serves at the will and at the pleasure of council. And so what I'm doing is, I'm taking the body who hires him, not just one individual, and making sure it gets addressed, because it needs to be done that way.
All right, just a couple, go ahead.
And one more. And I was not told that the city attorney asked me to call him. And as my request specifically put it, the city attorney could have done the same to me, too. But I was not told to call the city attorney to clarify this or correct this.
All right. Let me, let me just say a couple of things in regard to the role of the city attorney. The city attorney, as it's been mentioned tonight, works for the city and all the citizens. He is one of four city staff that we evaluate and, yes, could hire or fire. But he works for the city and all the citizens. His job is to be very knowledgeable about the laws relating to the government and the legality of procedures that we follow. He must let us know what the law says, not what we want it to say. And I think that's important to remember. We've got a motion second in regard to going into executive session. All in favor, let it be known by the upraised hand, and it passes. We're going to executive session. And do we have a motion regarding eight A?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion. I would like to appoint to the Kerrville Public Utility Board of Trustees, position number four, Mr. Glenn Andrew.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay. All right. Let me ask you, do we have any future agendas before we adjourn?
No. Just for the public to be aware, there's no action to be taken on item eight B or nine B.
Okay.
It was discussed, though.
Right. All right. Okay, eight forty-six. You're going to have before nine o'clock. We are adjourned.